...that you greatly heap upon us. Thank you for all the men and women here tonight in the audience and those at home watching, and thank you for the leadership up here on the dais. We need your wisdom and we need your guidance. We especially want to say prayers for some families in Canby that have faced some tragedy over the last couple of months. The Remington family who lost Wes Remington earlier this week, A.J. Schlatter and his family, we lift them up to you, Lord, as well as the Greer family. All very unfortunate and tragic things to have happen. Please bless those families, give them peace. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the proclamation for Canby Fights Hunger Days, whereas nationally, one in six people struggle to put food on their plate each month, and whereas hunger and food insecurity are serious problems and are recognized as affecting people across the city of Canby, and whereas the Canby St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank at St. Patrick's Church, the Food Pantry at Canby Alliance Church, and the Canby Center collectively provide food to 5,300 individuals each month. And whereas these organizations rely on donations of food from local businesses, churches, civic organizations, and individuals to help feed the hungry in Canby, and whereas during March 1st through the 13th, 2016, bins will be set out at participating organizations where food donations can be made to help those three organizations replenish their inventory so they can continue to provide food to the hungry. Now, therefore, I, Brian Hodgson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim March 1st through the 13th, 2016, as Canby Fights Hunger Days, and call this observance to the attention of everyone in our community given under my hands this third day of February 2016 in the city of Canby, Oregon. And we think we've got a few people here to help tell us about it and accept this proclamation. I've got David Rankin and Pastor Burton and Janelle Keltzer. Am I leaving anyone off the list there? No?
Guess you could be the designated appointee here there, David.
There we are, sir.
Thank you. And that's for you. You want to take a moment and let everyone here know and everyone in the Canby TV land what's going on?
Well, as the proclamation says, there are three organizations in Canby that feed the hungry, and they do it entirely through donations from churches, from individuals, from stores, and through fundraising that they use to then buy food at discounted rates. And the organizations run virtually entirely with volunteers. And when I called on them, my organization is called JustServe.org, one of the things I was hearing was that they needed more food, especially in the spring, and so it seemed like the reasonable thing to do is to have a food donation project. And so far, we have 47 organizations signed up. I sent a list to the city councilors about four days ago, and there's four more organizations signed up since I sent you the list, two yesterday and two today. So the list just keeps growing, and I think we're going to have an outstanding project and appreciate the backing of the city with this proclamation because it shows that businesses and civic organizations that the city's in support of the project. And the city, of course, is one of the organizations that is putting bins in city offices so that their employees can support the project if they choose. Of course, everything's voluntary, but should be an excellent project and hopefully we can do this every year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your... Next on our agenda, we have the swearing-in of two brand-new police officers. Chief?
All right. Well, Nate, here's Jeffrey. How do you guys just make this very... So, this is the first time we've had two, and we do have a repeat.
It's familiar.
Familiar face.
I like him this.
So I'll start with Nate Walbaum. So Nate Walbaum is really a Canby homegrown boy here. He's been here most of his life. His parents, Russian Tish, were they here, right, today? You can introduce them back there. And Nate graduated from Canby High School in 95, attended Multnomah University, where he graduated a bachelor of science degree in youth ministry and Bible theology in 2000. And Jocelyn, his wife, is here. Married over 15 years, and they have four loving children over there. You know, I don't know if you want to introduce the kids' names because I do not remember right now.
Elijah, Noah, Savannah, and Seela.
Great. He began his career in law enforcement with Beaverton Police Department in 2007, but just before that, he got a kind of an interest in law enforcement. He worked with the Clackamas County Juvenile Department where he worked with troubled teens, and he did that, and that led to his actually police career. We hired him in 2010, and he remained with us until about 2015, and he had a short absence here with us, and he's come back here in 2016, and we welcome him back. So I'm thrilled to welcome Nate again as a part of our Canby Police Department, and I expect really great things from Nate here in the future. So we have Jeffrey Johnson. Jeffrey has been living in Canby since seven years of age, so pretty much a Canby resident and a Canby homegrown as well. Parents here are Pat and Jackie, and look, there they are, right there. And Jeff has a younger brother named Derek as well. He's a 2006 graduate at Canby High School. In 2010, he graduated from the University of Redlands with a double major bachelor's of science in math and history. In 2013, he graduated with a master's degree in higher education, also from the University of Redlands. He has a love for baseball. Many of you may even know that already. And not only played very well in high school, but played well enough to play all four years that he attended college as well. He last year served as the head baseball coach at Sunset High School. Is that for the freshmen?
Here in town.
In town, for the freshmen. There we go. He's married four years to his wife, Lea, and so he's here. Yeah, I asked a little bit about Jeffrey and asked what his kind of hobbies were, what he liked, and he did. And he likes to read comic books. His favorite comic hero right now, at least at this point in time, is the Green Lantern, which is kind of fun and a little bit to think about because the Green Lantern actually is a crime fighter drawing his strength from a magic ring. We did issue the uniform, and he has a gun, no magic ring, but we expect really great things from him as well. So we welcome also Jeffrey Johnson here, and I don't know if you... Is there anybody else here you want to introduce that I may have been...
Nope.
Okay. So I'm happy to introduce him and welcome you also to the Canby Police Department. So, all right. Judge, I think we're ready.
Judge. Good job.
Déjà vu, Judge?
And I'd like to welcome the Green Lantern. That's great. So raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Nate Walbaum.
Being first duly sworn to pose and say...
Being first duly sworn and sworn to say.
Duly sworn, pose and sworn to say. We didn't practice this.
That's all right. That I will support and uphold the constitutions...
That I will support and uphold the constitutions.
...of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances...
And the charter and ordinances.
...of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
Remaining in compliance with...
Remaining in compliance with...
...the professional standards established...
The professional standards established.
...by the department's mission.
By the department's mission.
Values and professional code of ethics.
Values and professional code of ethics.
Department policies and directives.
Department policies and directives.
And will faithfully perform the duties...
And will faithfully perform the duties.
...of police officer for the city of Canby, Oregon.
Of a police officer for the city of Canby, Oregon. A police officer for the city of Canby, Oregon only and forever.
Not be repeated. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All right, Nate, so... Chief, you want to sign these?
I'll start with this one, and Jeffrey, congratulations and welcome to the department. I have to do your badge here. And then you've been asked, Mrs. Lam, come up and pin the badge here, Nate. Welcome back home.
Thank you.
Welcome back home.
You promised it's the last one.
We made that one a trick one. It'll be really most timey as hell on the picture here.
Welcome back.
I know. Because I think I was looking at him. Mr. Mayor?
We all good there, chief?
I think we're good.
Now the whole back room.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, hang on, before you guys all jet out of here, I just want to say congratulations, Jeffrey, welcome aboard, welcome home, and I know you'll do a great job. And Nate, welcome back, and yes, you cannot go again. But to all the officers, thank you guys very much for all you do, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Counselor Parker, did you...
No, that was what I wanted to...
Give a moment to...
Yes, for the mass evacuation.
Yes.
I think this will be...
I see, we need to swear more of you in, we have not yet.
Or make them stay.
Make them stay.
This is a shortage, isn't it?
Do it at the end. We'll move into communications. Anything from the team there at the short end of the table?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
No.
He's done with his speech now.
I didn't mean anything by it.
Wow.
Look at that look.
Oh, you're so...
I think I walked into office owing her, so it's okay. Anything from you guys?
I have nothing, thanks.
Okay. Our first opportunity this evening for citizen input and community announcements, generally ask for a little yellow card to be filled out, and tonight, we've got Jack Starrett here to talk about the Fire Explorer Program. Mr. Starrett, how are you, sir?
Great.
Good.
I'm happy to the council and want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jackson Starrett, here to talk to you about the Fire Explorer Program. I've been working with Chief Davis and Chief Gary since August of last year. I emailed Chief Davis about starting an explorer program here in Canby. He referred me to Chief Gary, who I've been communicating with since October. And the purpose of the program is to educate high schoolers who are interested in serving the community by teaching them the skills used by firemen so that they can get a jump on learning those skills if they want to become firemen after high school. The program would include community outreach and regular training exercises, which the high schoolers would participate in. And thanks to all the hard work of Chief Davis and Chief Gary, we finally got the program off the ground. Just need a couple more participants, and I was hoping that the council would be willing to publicize it a little bit, excuse me, and so we could get a couple more people to participate in it. Just really, lastly, I want to thank Chief Davis and Chief Gary for all the hard work they did. I really appreciate it and really, you know, want to express my deepest gratitude towards them.
Great. Thanks, Jackson.
Thank you.
How many more people are you looking for to fill out the program?
Between two and three.
Okay. And it's eight, so mostly just the high school students?
Right now, the ideal age group is basically people in high school, yes.
Okay.
Could you send us a concise, maybe, description of it so that we could put it out on our social media sites or whatnot?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah, if you want to, if you get something typed up, send it on to Kim, our city recorder, and she'll make sure that we all get it, and then we'll do our part to try to spread the word and help Chief Davis and...
Tag Gary.
Tag Gary get that pushed out as well.
Okay, great.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other citizen input this evening?
There goes the rest of your audience, man.
What's that?
There goes the rest of your audience.
You guys are sipping off for the rest?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. We'll move into mayor's business. First, I will say, I've noticed we've got a young scout in the audience there. Generally, what I do when we have a scout here, I like them to come up and introduce themselves and tell us what you're working on. Would you like to come up to the table there and introduce yourself?
Not really.
Not really?
It's all part of the marriage.
I'm Cameron Hadd from Chicago 5, and I'm working on my Communications Smart Badge.
Excellent. And how long have you been in scouts?
Two years.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll try to make it as entertaining as we can for you tonight. So mayor's business, additional things, just quite a busy couple of weeks here. I just want to say congratulations and a great job to Allegro Dance Company on their recent ballet that they put on. I think it was a sellout almost every evening for the Little Mermaid. It was fantastic. It's great to have a professional dance company like Allegro here in town, and I know several of us on the dais here have had and do have children involved there, so thank you to Joni and everyone there. We had municipal audit and financial oversight committee last week, Matt reviewed the CAFR, and I'm going to put Counselor Parker on the spot. CAFR, sir, is?
Certified Annual Performance Review.
Financial Review.
Financial Review, yes.
It's an F.
We tried to avoid too many acronyms, and I forgot what CAFR was. I know what it is, but not the acronym, so thank you, sir.
Consolidated Annual Financial...
There we go.
It's not developing any new information. It's putting all of our city information in one convenient place for citizens to have a transparent way of viewing our government.
Bet you won't ask them again, will you? No, that was a very well...
But it does nothing to help prevent fraud, just like our own municipal audits.
But that's why we have an accounting firm, an audit firm, that reviews that for us, so, which we've done very well, our financial team and Haley and her team did a great job getting that ready, and so definitely, if you're interested in reading it, it's all online. I attended the North Clackamas Chamber meeting last week. They were doing the State of the Cities address for Clackamas County, so they had the mayors from, well, mayors from Oregon City, Happy Valley, Damascus, and then the council president from Gladstone, just kind of give an update on what was kind of going on in their cities, and then did a big question and answer period. Big piece of conversation and concern for, really across the board for them, housing was a big conversation piece, the fact that Portland's not expanding their urban growth boundary, roads was a big conversation piece amongst everyone, and the lack of employment lands. We seem to be in Clackamas County right now, really us, and until they get some transportation pieces to further out to Estacada and Malala, we really kind of lead the charge in employment lands for Clackamas County, and that's, it's a concern for those cities because they don't have it, they have very little, and they're trying to work on. And then the, some pieces came up about the Oregon State Legislature short session. Seems to be some concern across the board on taxes and whatnot, and I left off Milwaukee as the other city, so most of the concern was there. We had a meeting with, I also had a meeting with Commissioner Bernard, and he's expressed, there's a conversation going on at the county about opening up the conversation about the rural and urban reserve conversation that we had a number of years ago, and wants to get with myself and our city manager to have some dialogue about where we're at and our thoughts and whatnot, so that I'll keep everyone in tune on that piece. Yesterday, I gave the State of the City address yesterday at the Chamber of Commerce. I really want to say thanks to obviously staff members that came to that, as well as Counselor Rocha and Counselor Parker, thank you for being there. I know the rest of you were there in spirit, I appreciate it. It was very well attended. I think we had over 100 people attend luncheon, so it was, yeah, it was, yeah, I haven't got a final count, but it was Mallory, the chamber director, thought it was more than last year, so we kind of seem to keep growing that event, so it was good. I think things in Canby are going well, and we'll keep it going that direction. I think there's going to be a replay on CTV5 if you're interested in watching it. The city hall has a copy, and if you want a copy to read it, you can do that, and I will, my goal is tonight to get it up on my blog if you want to go there to look at it. Monday night, I had an area commission transportation meeting on the STIP process, so this was the binder that I had to read of all the different STIP proposals, so $41 million thought or to dish out between, with only $11 million of money, so it was a very hard decision, but we got down to 150% list, and unfortunately, and I kind of got into myself, Commissioner Savis, and a few of us from Clackamas County, the way the projects worked out, Hood River County, they got, they had no projects make the list. Clackamas, we had the most projects out there, and Highway 43 seems to have made the, one of the proposals was to do some improvements on Highway 43. That did make the 150% list, actually pretty high, so it's a good chance it'll make the 100%. But the real disappointing piece, the whole purpose of the act was to try to get STIP funding for rural communities, so a lot of that, you know, being Hood River, for us, you know, we fall in that category as one of our funding sources, where everyone else within the metro area has M-TIP money that they can go after, so that's...
M-TIP?
M-TIP.
For the viewing audience?
For the viewing audience, and that's the Metro Transportation Improvement Project list, and every, almost all the other projects on that list have a shot at that money, which, so myself and Counselor, Commissioner Savis tried to drive home that point and was shot down in a blaze of glory from the Washington County group and the Multnomah County group, so...
Did Washington County gobble all the money again this year?
No, they have one project on the list, but the gobbler this time around was Multnomah County, so...
Thanks for trying.
Well, and I'll, you know, if, try again in three years, because that's the next time that STIP process opens back up, so we'll just keep after it and keep fighting for it. The, I also went and had conversation and made a presentation regarding what's, the handout here in front of you guys? This is the, this is for the immediate opportunity fund request that we've made, and so this is for, one of the projects that we've got coming up, it's, there's a business we've codenamed Blue Ice that is interested in moving their operations and building a facility here in Canby. To do that requires some road infrastructure that we would need to put in, and so ourselves, Clackamas, and then the Oregon Business Development Department all kind of got together and are requesting from OTC, which is the Oregon Transportation Commission, so OTC is the big transportation umbrella, ODOT falls underneath that, so OTC is the one that divvies out all the transportation dollars in terms of what goes to ODOT than what gets put out in terms of STIP, M-TIP, or other grants that become available. And so there's this opportunity fund that we've put in a request for, and I was able to get support from the chair and the co-chair of the act, so we're working on a letter that will back this up and go with it as well. And so providing that project does decide to come in and this money is available, then we will use that to improve fourth in the industrial park, so that's, you know, the Fourth Avenue extension to Malala, so we have, that's what these numbers are that we have up here, so we know. So we'll, we'll see. I think we are meeting with and making a presentation to the Oregon Transportation Committee or Commission later this month, so generally make that decision right down there, so hopefully we'll have word hereby, first meeting in March, whether or not we have that money available should we get the project. Also, met with a couple of the pastors regarding the mayor's prayer breakfast that's going to be in May, so they'll be, stay tuned for that. And then finally, we've got a lovely...
Bear, hold it behind you.
Thank you, Greg. So this is from the general, or the council general, from the Consular Office of Japan here in Portland, and it's, there's a translation here, I'll read that in a second, but it's just a letter, just, "Hope the New Year finds you well and ready to face the challenges of 2016. Please see the enclosed Consular General's commendation and recognition of your sister-city relationship with Japan." And the tentative translation is, "It's certificate of commendation, Consular Office of Japan extends its deepest regards to city of Canby, Canby-Iwazawa sister-city relationship in recognition of its distinguished service and contribution to the deepening of mutual understanding and friendship between Japan and the United States of America, awarded on December 11, 2015." So, that's pretty cool. All right.
I didn't know we had a sister city.
That's what it is.
Well, we've had them come a couple of times when they, because we swap students back and forth.
It used to be Curacaoa, but that city is no longer, and it combines with another city.
Okay. Yeah, and so this is, it's pretty neat. Where do these items go, Kim?
We'll put it out front.
For a while?
Yeah.
Great.
Are we going to sort of interchange stuff? Are we going to send them something, then? Let's think about that.
I will make a note of that.
Putting ribbon, burger chocolates.
Yeah, I think the last time they had students, like, they came to a council meeting and we sent them with like a pretty good-sized, like, Canby goodie bag, but they kind of tour around and whatnot, but I will make note of that with Kim and see if we reciprocate.
It's usually during the summer when they come.
Okay. And that concludes what I have, and so we'll start here with Counselor...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You already mentioned that I was at the State of the Cities convention yesterday, which was really good. Other than that, my liaison reports, my appointments don't start until end of this month, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the State of the City address, and you're getting much better at these things, you know? That was very lucid and sober presentation.
You're trying to be so conservative.
But I think it was a... And, and the mayor, the mayor gave a shout-out to Canby Now Facebook page, which is now up to 4,000 people, one out of every four people in Canby.
That's pretty serious, Mike.
And as the mayor says, they don't pull any punches, so if you want, if you want opinion, just ask a question there.
Yes.
Our bike committee had some visitors from the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and they are planning a bicycle tour this summer. They're going to, the Oregon City Chamber is no longer going to do... And as the mayor says, they don't pull any punches, so if you want, if you want opinion, just ask a question there.
Yes.
Our bike committee had some visitors from the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and they are planning a bicycle tour this summer. They're going to, the Oregon City Chamber is no longer going to sponsor the antique show in downtown Oregon City. They've decided to move on to something a little hipper and more active, and so they're going to have a bicycle tour and wanted to know if we wanted to play, because the 100-mile route is going to go through Canby. And so, we, we had some discussions about how we can capitalize on that and also learn from it, that it's really one of the goals of the bike committee is to put on its own events eventually. And here kind of hanging on to a Big Brothers organization, we get to, get to see how it's done. So I'll let you know the dates on that, they're going to have a big reveal coming up soon. Also, we were told that the Canby Liveability Coalition is going to be submitting a grant to get a bike repair station for the art park, try and get a little more momentum going out there at the park. Let's see, tomorrow, I get to hang out all day with the fire folks. I'm going to be participating in the fire captain's test.
Oh, that's right.
So I'll be there from 8:00 to 4:00. And they wanted someone who apparently knew nothing about the fire service, but wanted, wanted to see how this person might fit in with the community. So I guess the thinking is if they could get along with me, they would be excellent management in municipal operation. And then finally, went with a couple of us, Tracy and the mayor, to the Clackamas Cities. Also, Tracy Height was there as well, listening to four legislators talk about the upcoming session, and I found that really helpful.
Good. Thank you, sir. Councilor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did attend the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner. Senator Allen Olson, Senators Rosenbaum and Monroe, and Representative Taylor gave kind of a legislative preview of the 35 days of crazy in the net house that we are dealing with now. I always call it the marble net house, because everything happens in very breakneck speed at this time of the year. So it's, it's a lot of fast-paced craziness going on. Everybody's running, it seems, room to room to room, because everything's happening on one hour notice and, yeah. So, that is why I was not able to attend the State of the Cities address, I apologize. I was at the Capitol for 10 hours yesterday and for, I think, today. So, actually on the legislative front, there are a couple of bills that people are very interested in. One in particular that's even hitting the news is Senate Bill 1532. And it has hit a bit of a speed bump, that's the tiered minimum wage bill. And it, it looked like it was going to go through without hardly any resistance until William County Commissioner Roger Nyquist made his testimony and pointed out that Oregon Constitutional Article 11, Section 15, doesn't allow the state to impose a unfunded mandate, if you will, on a county. So now they're kind of having to relook at this, they're having a work session tomorrow to discuss what, what this might mean to that bill. And if they're going to end up having to rewrite it, or, I don't know what they're going to end up doing, it may just end up on the ballot in November. And the second one, actually I wanted to bring up was Senate Bill 1521, the transit tax, which took up a lot of time in the liaison report section, so I'd actually like to move this to new business and discuss whether or not us as a council like to take a position on that.
Okay. Duly noted.
Pardon?
Duly noted.
Okay. And finally, I, all these police officers are gone, but I went to the retirement party for Sergeant Frank Schoenfeld, so if he's happening to tune in, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your service here in Canby. And that is all until new business.
And then you should congratulate him on starting his new position at-
In Malala, too.
Yes.
Semi-retired, I guess, yes.
Two days of retirement. Okay. Thank you, Councilor, appreciate it. Councilor President Dale?
Mr. Mayor, the Canby Utility Front Chairman Cornelius will be terming out and leaving us after six years as member and chairman, and we'll be saying more about that at the next council meeting. But in the meantime, that will open up a vacancy on Canby Utility Board. And so I would encourage anyone who's interested in helping to serve their community on the board to get their applications in soon, because we'll be needing to fill that position. It's a great opportunity to serve your community and learn a lot about the critical infrastructure of Canby. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilor Height?
Thank you.
Yes.
So I have two programming events at the library, per usual, I always have something going on. So this Saturday is a dance party for zero to six-year-olds with their, with their quote "big people," adults, et cetera, chaperones. So it's to commemorate the one-year anniversary, if you will, of the thousand books before kindergarten, that the library has successfully taken on this last year, and they have 200 participants now, which is quite good. Great participation, so they're going to dance it up for that. And then the Latin American history programs have been going on since about mid-January, they'll continue through the end of February. This is, I mentioned this before, but it's a $3,000 grant from the ALA, American Library Association, and National Endowment for the Humanities. And so, the title was, of the grant is Latino Americans, 500 Years of History. So there's been a couple films, some presentations. There's going to be a community book club coming up soon, it's the book Into the Beautiful North. So available copies are in English and Spanish, actually, at the library for the first 50 people that show up. They might have been, have flown off the shelves already, I'm not sure. But, so there's two events for that, one's at Troused on February 18th, that's like a family literacy night around this book. And then there's a more serious book club discussion at the library on the 23rd at 6:30. So two opportunities for that book, it's called Canby Reads. And then in terms of CAT, they renewed their contract with MV Transportation, apparently for the sixth year in a row, so that's a repeated thing. It's, we contract drivers and dispatchers through that service, and there was not a rate increase, which is kind of nice, so things are going well there. And then they ordered their three new buses and they'll come within 60 to 90 days, they think, and so they hope to get them in service then before the end of the fiscal year, so they'll be on the road before too long. And they also wanted to encourage us to like their Facebook page, CAT. They have, I'm not sure how much, how many likes, so to speak, they have, but they like to have their writers especially tuned into it, because when they make service changes due to weather and whatnot, their, their users, especially apparently Route 99 folks, pay attention to it. But if you, if you're on Facebook and so inclined, go ahead and check them out, it's Canby Area Transit. There's a little CAT icon, it's their profile picture, so that's kind of fun. So there's CAT. And then school district, this is kind of interesting, there's always a spotlight on success. Some schools showcased, last week or two weeks ago, it was 91. And they, there's a group of 5th and 6th LEGO Robotics students, and they did this service project called Color Cycle. And so, it was an initiative, apparently it's nationwide, K through 12 students, but they did it at 91. So they recycle expo markers, dry erase markers, and regular markers, and they actually can turn them into diesel. So they send them away to this company and they re, or re, what do you call it, repurpose them into clean energy, which is kind of neat. And so, they, superintendent was pretty inspired, so he said, "Well, let's put it in all the schools." So I think next year, all the elementaries at least will have this program, so good job, 91 for leading the cause there. And then January, I learned was Board Appreciation Month, the superintendent mentioned that, so he thanked all the board members. And I thought, oh, well, maybe we should retroactively thank our committees and boards of the city, too, and thank ourselves, right? For Board Appreciation Month. And then also, there's an additional day added to the school calendar, for those of you with children in the district, because we had a snow day in January. So there will be a day added in June for that. And otherwise, we had the reading initiative meeting with the superintendent and the library and several other community partners, so we're making progress there, which is pretty exciting. There'll be more information on that in the coming months. And I visited the food bank just out of curiosity and knowing that the Canby Fights Hunger Days were coming up. And so I thought, that was, that is quite a well-run operation, like 65 active volunteers, hundreds of people come through on Wednesday night from, I think it's about 4:30 to 8:00 PM. Really cool, I'm just, I'm so glad that St. Patrick's does that. They weren't here to receive the awards today, the McCollums, but they do a fantastic job. And also, yeah, I was at the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner with you guys, and it was interesting to hear what's happening from the legislators' point of view. And that's what I've got.
Well, my children will be disappointed that we're adding a date to the school year.
It's good for them, that's right.
It is good for them, absolutely.
Yeah.
How long until year-round school?
When I was a kid, we did have year-round school, actually.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, very interesting.
My dad's upset they have to go to school into June now.
Oh, no. Terrible.
We used to get up on Memorial Weekend.
Lots to learn, lots to learn. Councilor Coleman?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I also attended the Municipal Audit Committee meeting, and we had our first meeting this past week and had a presentation by the auditor. And I have to say, I believe the auditor is very impressed with our finance director and believes we'll run on a tight ship. Very good presentation. On the Planning Commission front, spoke with our Planning Director, Brian Brown, and he had told me that this is the last month for applications to be made to be on the November ballot. And he's expecting maybe as many as two applications likely related to the Redwood Concept Plan, which could be up to as much as 30 acres involved. I also attended the Traffic Safety Committee meeting this past Monday, it was very well attended and I always appreciate the, the participation by the police and fire. And one of the intersections that's come up a number of times is Ivy and 10th, and, you know, the safety issues there related to the possibility of a four-way stop. And our police officer, Nolan Booth, was there and he looked into the records of accidents there at that intersection and going back 10 years, there's actually been a relatively low number of accidents. But they realized that, you know, with the building out of Northwoods, the number of cars that going on there is going to increase, and so they're going to look to take account with the equipment that the city has on Ivy and 10th now, and just kind of monitor that. And, you know, very likely in the future, we'll need a four-way stop. But, let's see. Also, another thing we're doing is looking at all the digital signage around the community, mainly related to the school crossings and things. And we're going to kind of make a wish list of where we'd like to see future digital signage in the future. And then in April, there will likely be a public meeting to discuss safety measures related to Birch Street, so keep you apprised of that. Also, with Tracy, I attended the Canby Police Sergeant Frank Schoenfeld's retirement party, it was a big thank you to him, wish him good fortune. That's my advice for me.
Thank you, Councilor. The, I was, last week, one of the local coffee shops became my office for the, for a couple of days last week, and I had actually, a couple of people that live on the north side of town actually stop and thank me and to tell you, thank you guys as well for the addition of stop signs that we have put in a couple of the intersections, that they've greatly appreciate the fact that that's been done. They don't like stopping as much, but they do appreciate that that's gone in, so I just wanted to share that with, with all of you. I know that's not necessarily our doing, but, you know, that, please pass that along to that committee as well. And then you had mentioned something else, the Planning Commission, did you mention that that was for land annexations into the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Related to the North Redwood area, which I think there's a total of a little over 60 acres, and there's potentially about 30 potentially that Brian Brown thinks may come up for annexation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the minutes of the January 20th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting and a new outlet liquor license for Born and Raised.
Second?
Motion has been made in, by Council President Dale, and then seconded by Councilor Hensley to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the January 20th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting and a new outlet liquor license for Born and Raised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anywhere opposed? That carries 6-0. Kim? Resolutions and ordinances tonight?
We do not have any tonight, but you will the next meeting.
Saving them up. Stockpiling them up, all right. So we'll move in then to new business, just added this evening, so a discussion on the Senate Bill 1521. And, so I'm going to maybe turn that over to you since you-
Well, I'm not going to read the bill in its entirety, although they apparently are going to do that this session, which is good, but I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
For the record, because it's five pages long. But, in a nutshell, the bold print, it would be actually adding a tax, currently transit authorities can tax businesses for their operations taxes. This would impose a new tax equal to 0.185% of the wages on employees, and it would be a tax deduction, payroll deduction. So the, in a sense, essentially for, for an individual making $34,000 a year, it'd be $63 a year in taxes, or a little over $5 a month. At $55,000 in wages, it'd be $104 a year, a little over $8, almost $9 a month.
On the individual?
On the individual employee. These are new taxes, too. This is not a pass-through from the employer's tax, that's an additional tax. And of course, this is taxation without, of all the people, this is just going to be an imposed tax on, based, or from the transit authority itself. So-
What's the, what's the percentage again?
0.185%.
So is this a payroll, I don't, I don't understand what it's supposed to fund, roads, transportation, what's the revenue going towards?
Mass transit.
Okay.
And it would be, in the bold print on this page, which is, the bold print is in addition to the bill, to the law. Expanded, dedicated to enhancing the frequency of bus service, acquisition of buses, bus service expansion, or maintenance of operations of buses.
So, so transit is, so in the case of like TriMet or, we'll use CAT here in Canby, CAT is funded, its operations and whatnot is mostly funded, there's, from employers here in, in Canby. So the employers pay CAT tax based on their payroll, and that goes into CAT and that funds operations, equipment, whatever they, you know, they need to function. And in Canby, we, the, it's currently at, I want to, I know it's less than-
Like seven, like seven per thousand.
Is that, yeah, I know that we're less than what TriMet is. And so, when I originally was reading about this bill, my understanding was, I thought it was a, specifically for TriMet, but you're saying-
That is a common misperception, but TriMet is not labeled in here, it's just Mass Transit District.
So now we're skipping the business?
Any transit district could utilize this bill.
So, okay, so it's, the state would put it in, and then it would be up to, let's say for us, would it be up to us to then say we're going to impose that, or up to CAT?
I would, that's a good question. See, TriMet has its own board. I would think that it would be, well, just like we did the street, it would be a council decision. It would not be a vote of the people unless we chose it to be.
So that would have been potentially fall for, I mean, Joe, you know, I'm sure you're all up on all the legislative activity.
Yeah. Well, it's funny, because I had printed this out today and started to look at it a little bit, too, because of, Julie was asking me about it, too. But I, you know, it's one of those things where it gives the authority, a little bit of local authority, I think, to raise that additional taxation. And I'm not sure exactly where the money, or how the money is supposed to be dedicated, if you do indeed raise those taxes. But my, my assumption was, in looking at it first blush, was that it gave kind of a local option to raise a little more taxes.
How many times has it been around?
I might be wrong about that.
Tracy, it's just experienced the first reading so far?
Yes.
Because it'll probably be amended, so-
It's getting a hearing on Monday.
Okay. So what are we being called to do here?
Well, I think that's, I think what we're getting to here.
Well, given the fact that, well, especially in Clackamas County, there's been an adverse bond about taxes, especially taxation without a vote of the people. In 2011, we had a $5 vehicle registration fee proposed for the Salwood Bridge, which went down considerably, 63% to 36%. All four precincts in Canby at the time, it went down by large margins. The county has been pulling for vehicle registration fee to do, to do roads in the county at a $25 a year, which was $25 for, for the four years, for the vehicle registration fee. And it's not polling out well, so $63 tax per year on a $34,000 income is- So $63 tax per year on a $34,000 income, especially without a vote of the people, is not going to set well with the citizens. We still are hearing flack about a $5 street maintenance fee down, right? So, um, I am against this bill personally. I plan to go and testify against it. My proposal to, to the council is, will the council take a position on it? And we submit a letter of testimony as a board.
Okay. So that's kind of the ask on this particular piece? Okay.
What's the time, I'm lost, Counselor Height, what's the time on this? I know there's some testimony coming up, but what's the timing of it?
The, uh, the hearing is on Monday. And as fast as things happen, they'll vote it in, they'll probably, I think it's a work session as well, so they'll vote it out of committee on Monday, or not, but probably. But it's, is, in 35-day session, it only has about two weeks in the first chamber and then has to go to the second. So it, it's moving quickly and pretty much we would have to decide now if you're going to take a position. So it can be written and sent in by Monday's hearing.
I don't like the idea of us taking, um, taking on state legislation like we did in June with the Second Amendment. I mean, we did that once. I don't think that should set a precedent for this body make, taking positions on state business. So I would recommend against it.
We wouldn't be the only city doing that.
I don't have enough information.
It affects our citizens, so it's our job to do that.
Your finish, please.
Right. So as individual citizens, I'm all for it. As a governing body of the Canby City Council, however, I don't feel comfortable taking a position on this. We could ask Ms. Whaling, Julie, our transit director, to give us some of her input on it. That might be helpful at this local level, what the impact might be from her point of view, or if Joe wants to look into it. But that's my position.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Additional thoughts, comments?
Well, I have one, Mayor, and that is that, um, we've not, we've not waded into this before. In the six years I've been on the council, we've not done that. We've left that up to League of Cities to keep a look at legislation and deal with it. I don't think we have the capacity in this city to do bill research. And especially during an abbreviated session, by the time we get a letter down there, this thing could be amended to something else. So I just, from a structural standpoint, it doesn't make sense. Tracy emphasized the taxation element. This money isn't just going to be tossed into an incinerator, it's going to be used for something. And it might even advance our strategic goals. I don't know. I mean, it's something, if we really wanted to wade into this, we need to refer this to our transit committee and let those citizens look at it and let them advise us. But mechanically, I don't see how that can happen and get back to us. And then we spend staff out doing bill research? That's an expense that we don't have programmed in. And, and which bills do we pick? Ones that have taxes we don't like? So I just, it, it, it just opens up resources that we haven't allocated. It puts us into a timeframe that doesn't make sense, given the short session. And third, it is, really is a break from what, what the city has done for years and years, which is to leave the lobbying about city issues up to the League of Cities and let us focus on, on the sidewalks and potholes in our own city.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, the League of Oregon Cities does do good lobby work, but they also do occasionally send us emails asking us to submit testimonies sometimes.
I don't remember us ever doing it.
A few years ago there was. I'll have to dig that out and bring it to you.
Hey, Counselor Coleman, President Dale, anything?
I'm personally against the tax. That's what it turns out to be. I mean, my employees wouldn't like that, but I don't know as a governing body where we stand on it. I personally would put my name not to, personally, my name not to be in favor for it. But I don't know who we are as a board, as a council.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just say, Mr. Mayor, um, well, I'm not in favor of increased taxes without our, certainly having a say on it, but I, I'm hesitant to, like Counselor Parker said, to have us weigh in on something that we don't have, um, really the ability to affect the outcome a whole bunch. And it could really take up, I don't know, it's just a difficult one. I don't know that our opinion would have a great deal of weight.
Well, I, I wouldn't necessarily underestimate a council's weight down there. I, I, I wouldn't. Is, you know, it wouldn't put us too far off. I mean, I'd like to, at least personally, I'd like to think that we have some, some weight, but it would be, you know, somewhat issue by issue. But, um, so, okay.
Tracy, do we know, this will have to go to the House as well?
If it passes the Senate.
If it passes the Senate. Do we have an idea on the timing on that?
Well, the hearing will be Monday if it votes out of there, um, or, or, well, by then we'll be eight days in, so probably hit the floor by the end of the week so it can go to the other side. We only, we have, the thing has to be done through both sides of the building by March 5th.
By March 5th.
I think Senate dies, constitutional Senate dies 6th.
Just my thoughts on, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, obviously I'm not nuts about the tax. I have an opinion about why they're doing it. To me, it's a, it's kind of a pass-through, get out of jail card to allow local districts to have the state authority, state's authority to go ahead and do this type of taxation.
If the, if, well, now I guess that's my, and we, sorry to interrupt your...
I, I don't think we have support on the board tonight to act, but what I'm interested in, it's a pretty quick read, the bill. I mean, I scanned through it rudely here in a few minutes. I, I would like, with all due respect to Counselor Parker, I think it's a pretty quick read. I wouldn't mind Joe's three bullets, quick take on it. The only, and the only reason I ask is because we are a, a transportation district ourselves and we are that board. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't nibble at it much, but we are one. And I did get an earful Monday night about our transit tax, so I heard about it too. So, uh, that's, that's just my take on it.
Okay. I will gladly bullet point what it appears to be doing.
It does mean two weeks before we would hear back from Joe.
Oh, well, I can email you all at least.
Okay.
But...
It'd be two weeks before we could act.
Right. If we were to take a position, it would have to be on the half side then. But that's better than nothing.
So, let me then break down the two pieces here. Because now, now we're, now we've got two different situations here. So, so let's go tackle, the first piece is, to Counselor Parker's point and Counselor Height's is, is do we start wading into these, as a, as a, as a body, do we start wading into these pieces on the short, short sessions and the long sessions? We pay a membership to the League of Oregon Cities to, to vet these things and bring these things to our attention and provide that they're going to fight the fight that we want them to fight. That's not always the case. It's part of the membership of the League of Oregon Cities. So let's, you know, so I'd like some dialogue on that before we even, before I want to direct, you know, Joe and potentially Julie to give us some thoughts. Counselor Parker?
Tracy, do you know what LOC's position is on this?
I don't, I can't find it. I don't have my iPad. I have Google here.
And who's, who's proposing this? Who introduced it?
Senator Courtney.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, there's a couple of ways that I could argue this. One, we don't have enough information. And two, really, I think we need to have a study session to, to talk about what comes before the board and when. With your authority, I requested that the city attorney begin doing some work on the foreclosed houses. I still don't have that report. And, and I just am a little bit protective of having things leapfrogged over existing requests.
Sure.
So, you know, we need to develop, I think, a process by which we do things. More than one of us was not completely satisfied with the speed and method of, of the Second Amendment legislation that came before the council. I also felt that leapfrogged over several issues that I had requested. So I, I would like the mayor and the city administration to talk about a process for pre-filtering these things. Are we going to do it? Is there support for doing this? And if there is, how do we want this to come to us? With a staff report and recommendation, like we do everything else in this city? Instead of just, you know, having me show up with a beer is good proclamation and saying this will help our economy? Trust me. You know, I think, I think that we need to loop this in to how we run a city.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to Counsel Parker's position on that, I understand that he has things that he wants to talk about and I'm all about talking about those things as well. This was something I brought up in my council liaison, is something that the mayor had known about. Quite honestly, I just read the bill myself today. So with the speed of things that are happening down there, the bill just introduced a couple of days ago, that's how it becomes urgent. It doesn't diminish anything that you have requested to talk about and hasn't taken anything that you want to talk about off the table.
Maybe it's time for us to have some sort of goal-setting session. A lot of other councils, I know a lot of our neighboring cities are doing that in January. It's kind of protocol, I think, for city councils. If we're not, if we don't need to, or you don't think we need to, okay. Or maybe some sort of council dynamics, like what Counselor Parker was saying. When is it appropriate to bring this sort of business up and what's the filter and what's the protocol? That would be helpful for us to have rules of operation so we know what to expect.
Well, and that is part of our April...
April. So we've got another several months and here this comes up.
Sure. Well, no, I understand that and there's extenuating circumstances as to why it's April and not, had not occurred in January or February. So, um, that is generally when that occurs.
When it's done.
Yes. You know, so I, and I, Counselor Parker, I totally understand where you're at on, yeah, how does this, how would process these things and bring them, bring them forward? You know, it is, it's a short session and, you know, that's why I wanted to break down the, the two pieces here, because that's what I think that we have is, you know, is, you know, is that bigger, is wading into these things what we want to do? So that's, to me, it sounds like it's a conversation that we, you know, collectively either I need to have with, you know, the city attorney and the city manager and then us collectively. What does that do and what does that look like? Because it is, it's manpower, it's man hours and we don't, we don't have a, a government affairs liaison like Wilsonville and, and Happy Valley and a few of the other larger cities. So that does fall to staff time and, you know, and whatnot. So, uh, so, okay, I hear that piece of it. So are we, so then my next question is, do we, do we want more information from a consensus standpoint? Do we want a three-bullet point from our city attorney and from our transit director?
I do. I'm not interested in having that.
I'm not, no, I think it's a personal issue with individuals, not, it's not our business as a council.
Being that we have a transit authority, I think it's good that we know.
Okay.
Ideally, I like things to, you know, come before us with a recommendation that we can really thoroughly discuss. I just don't feel like we have enough information or understanding to really make a vote on this and I, um, I would just encourage us to not get involved in things that, that are beyond the scope of what we're supposed to be doing.
So you're kind of on the side of, you know, I don't want any further information on this right now?
I'm not saying that. I just think in general, ideally, if it comes through the, the cycle and we have recommendations, that's the ideal way. But I think that we, you know, reminded of the serenity prayer, you know, you recognize the things you can change and the things you can't change. And so I, I think we need to not deal with things that we really don't have any power or influence over. Because we have plenty to do without weighing in on a lot of the stuff on the outside.
Because you're, you're definitely more on the precept that I, I don't need, we don't, you don't necessarily want to put staff time into digesting this and putting it back to, at least giving us a...
Well, if this is an issue certainly that affects our employers and if Joe looks at it and you look at it and you determine that, you know, this is really not something we need to take a look at, take a stand on, then I, I would be happy to see it loop through the process with the recommendation. And we've had an opportunity to thoroughly discuss it. But, uh, you know, anything that's going to affect, you know, our citizens, our employers, our employees, that's pretty important stuff.
Okay, so I'm going to be, be a little bit of a devil's advocate here on you, Counselor Coleman, so bear with me. By that theory then, everything that they're doing in the short session, we should be also digesting and taking, you know, see what I'm saying? I mean, because, I mean, everything that's being put down there, you know, it impacts our citizens and, you know, and whatnot. I just, you know, being, you know, somewhat argumentative on the, because I, I hear where you're at and that you don't feel that we, this is, we should be weighing in on, on these state issues in this regards and that you're not for this kind of becoming a dialogue piece.
Well, I mean, like, I understand Counselor Parker's point about, he has some important issues, as I'm sure all the counselors do, that they want to have addressed. But when you have a fastball thrown at your head, you want to be able to respond to that. And if this is something that you and Joe and city administrator think that we should look at, or if the council collectively thinks that we should look at, then we should look at it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, like I, excuse me, like I said, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that's really making me nibble at it is that we are a transit district ourselves and we've had a concern from a senior director about it. So I am interested in a very time-boxed, you know, like less than 20 or 30 minutes type of assessment from Joe and get a thumbs up or down read from our city administrator and then go from there. That's probably all that the issue's really worth at this point. Reading it, it looks like we're staying in the driver's seat in its unamended form and would not have to act on it even at the pass.
But it would be a tool in the city's toolbox.
It would be a tool chest that this council probably wouldn't avail itself of. But I say, just because we're a district and we've had a senior director be interested in it, I'm interested in a limited look at it.
Yes.
To answer Counselor Parker's question about the LOC, looking at their site, it doesn't appear that they have had time to take a position on this particular bill yet, but in their January newsletter, they do have a article from their legislative director talking about the city's role in the legislative process and how it wants input, members' input on these types of things to help them in their, in their job. And everything's a fastball in February, so...
So right where you draw the line then?
No.
Everything's a fastball.
With things that affect the city, which this would affect the city. So, that's all I have.
We have, we'll leave it at that point. So, based on a, kind of a draw situation here, Joe, um, and, because we don't, we don't have a process in place, as Counselor Parker makes that point, we've got, we are a transit district. This will have some impact on us. Julie's asking about it, sorry, our, our transit director. We, yeah, this is a interesting piece. I, I'd like, I'd like us to at least see it in some quick fashion, you know? So please, I guess, talk, if Julie's bringing it up and you guys are already having a conversation about it, then just share that with us in terms of a conversation piece. I don't know what that's going to mean in terms of... I don't know what that's going to mean in terms of, you know, us taking any kind of a council action of any kind, but this is, sets up, you know, there is going to be more things like this as we grow as a city and as these things come along, and we do need to create a, some sort of a process in that regards. So if, that's something that's already being addressed and worked on. Thoughts, comments on that, Joe, Amanda?
Well, my plan was to thoroughly look at it and chat with Julie anyway, so as far as efficiencies go, I can easily do a bullet point and a recap of what our conversation is, and run it, you know, CC Rick, and he'll chime in on it for sure when he gets CC'd on stuff, so. And then that at least will inform you guys a little bit more, and then you can, you know, if somebody wants to try to take a certain torch, you can bring it back to yourselves and see, you know, how that burns.
That's an interesting analogy, Joe.
Exactly.
Yeah. Trying to think how I want to tell this one without Joe. Okay, so let's, then let's go that route. The fastball comes and goes, and we miss it, and that's the case, and it'll be what it'll be. But we'll at least be, at least armed with information.
Yeah.
From that standpoint.
Well, and just in my time here, I've seen you guys, you know, there's, there's different avenues to take, right? Sometimes things aren't always active on.
Sure.
And you have to realize, you know, what level of legislative power versus, you know, just opinion power or whatever. But then there's also, you know, the proclamation ideas and things like that. And then there's this idea that a lot of times staff will come, you know, the police chief might show up and have a burning desire to have a pawn ordinance because he knows that a pawn shop's coming in, you know, and he knows the issues there. So sometimes things kind of are reactive, and then other times I think things are proactive. You know, I know you guys have goals, and I think we all pay attention to and have a mandate to pay attention to your goals, which are right behind you, and how to accomplish those things, and what we hear, and kind of what the political ones are doing. So we can probably nail that down in a workshop setting, and we can set it, you know, whenever you guys are ready to hear something like that. But it, but it sounds like things come to us in kind of a myriad of ways.
Did you?
Yeah.
Amanda, anything?
Nope.
No? Sure. All right, so we'll take that piece right now and go that route and.
Absolutely.
And then.
And expect to see that within about a day or so.
I'm sure, yeah, Julie's, or Transit Director is probably wanting to know quickly as well, so we'll take it that, okay? All right, thank you all, appreciate that conversation. City Administrator, business and staff reports?
Oh, well.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Maybe just a real quick update on the project, so you have some good news after that conversation.
After the conversation's fine.
But this one's great, too. So there's been a lot of work going on down at the job site.
And what job site would that be?
This weekend at the new library in Civic Building.
Civic Building, library, yes.
They've worked a couple Saturdays, taken advantage of some nice weather, and probably will in the next couple Saturdays as well.
Great.
Make up for some time that was lost due to weather and not getting some materials here. If you've been down there, you'll notice that most of the site is full of materials. And just as a reminder, some of the materials are local, the wood from Camby Builder Supply. So it's good to see local businesses have some materials on site. Probably in the next week, you'll see the second story start to climb up. They're working on the deck for the second story today, tomorrow, the next day. And you'll probably see a roof on late March, early April.
That's crazy.
So they're moving forward. And you'll notice that all the action is at the east end of the building, and they'll just back their way out. They have a crane in there. If you're around this weekend, you might have also seen the exchange of the crane. They had a crane that had some mechanical issues, slowed them down for about a day and a half, they had to get a new crane in there. So that's in there and up and working now. Street was closed, a section of the street between the driveways into Cutz First was closed, and running some water lines for domestic water and for the fire line. Lots going on. Okay?
It is impressive to go by there, and it's not, where my office is in Portland, there's, I mean, there's a ton of construction going on, but it's so incremental, where what I see us doing, it, day-to-day, there are major changes to the building right now, and it's really pretty cool to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next, this, this month will probably be the month with the most changes that are visible to the community, so.
Yeah.
It'll look way different at the end of the month than it looks right now.
Change of the skyline.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the cool part. Well, Amanda, I know that you are probably, you know, shoulder-deep with your hands in the project, and I think, I speak for all of us when I say thank you for all the tenacious hard work that is going into this, and between you and Rick and the rest of the city staff to keep on Triplett Wellman, their work on Saturdays, that warms my heart.
That's really cool.
Rain day? Looks like we're working on a nice Saturday, sorry.
We have some nice weather coming next week, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Love it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other fun staff reports at all? No? Okay. I like it when you're here, we get to put you on the spot, since we know how much you love talking on cable.
Well, I love talking about that project.
I know you do.
Tonight, item number 10 on our list here is second opportunity for citizen input. Either of you gentlemen, I'm seeing smiles and no's, okay. So action review, Kim, there's a ton.
It's going to take a while. You've approved the consent agenda, and the city attorney will research Senate Bill 1529 and report back to the council.
Two items, fantastic.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, do we have an exact session tonight?
We do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe, again.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Let's debate it for the hand of the juror.
All right, motions are made by.
I sure could dig something else up, don't I mean, I don't want a adjourn. It's not debatable, okay.
Motion to adjourn was made by Councilor Hensley and seconded by Councilor Rocha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to stay?
Nope.
Good night, Camby.